...the regular council meeting. I think. Yes, we are recording. So, best behavior, everybody. You have an agenda. The agenda was emailed to you. We have a couple of additions to the agenda. Under new business, the second reading of the land use by law change that we just talked about. And also, we are going to discuss the situation across from Rebecca's restaurant, the parking lot situation.
Under new business?
Under new business, yes. Okay.
Mayor, with those amendments, I move that we approve the agenda as submitted.
All right. Seconded by Councilor Carver, all in favor. Motion's carried. Let's get right into it. Minutes of the regular meeting of July 9th. What is the will of council?
I move to be approved circulated.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilor Carver, all in favor. And the special meeting of July 16th.
Move to be accepted as circulated.
Seconded by Councilor Feeny. All in favor. Motion's carried. Consideration of delegations. We have Barry Doherty. Sir? You have 10 minutes?
Do I stand or do I sit or does it matter?
Whatever's convenient.
I'll sit if that's cool. My daughter, Olivia, is here as well. She'll jump in if I say too little or too much. I think I sent a quick email just with the two or, I call them one-pagers, but I'm quite verbose, so they turn into three usually. That's the way that works. So, I don't know if any people had a chance to take a peek at it. If they did, great. For those of you who know me, I'm, I call myself, from Mahone Bay. I went to school here a thousand years ago. I bought the Tony Burgoyne property four or five years ago. My mother, who grew up partially in Mahone Bay, lives there now. And I've got a, I use Tony's old garages to stash some of my old collection of old cars and other nonsense and parts up there. So, that's where, that's a little bit of me. I've been looking for about 18 months or so for a piece of land and underutilized unused building, either owned by a municipality, manufacturing plant, of which there's not very many of them around, someplace to store and display some of these old cars that I have. It's a pure, most of you are my injure, my vintage, remember AMC? Most people don't collect AMC. They collect cars that have more value, Mustangs and Ferraris and other important stuff. I collected AMC because I think they're fun. My dad used to run the, help run AMC dealership in Bridgewater, so that's where I got this crazy fetish for AMC cars. Anyway, long story short, I've been looking for quite a while to find a suitable spot. I'd like to establish a gallery, museum, something to show these cars because I have them stashed in Mahone Bay, they're in Old Harbor, they're in the valley, they're all over the place. They're basically hidden away. People should be able to either see them, enjoy them, open fun of them, whatever, at least they, anyway. So, I tried to think of how this, how I could do this. I've got a colleague who's got a couple of cars as well. We thought, let's pull a little bit of our own money, see if we can engage either a company or a municipality, maybe a layer or two of government to create a museum that can be a tourism draw or a spot where people can work. Duffers like my dad can come along and be guide to people who want to go through this museum. Anyway, long story short, this, getting into a long story, so it's not short. I inquired, because I started doing Google mapping of anything around, anywhere between Hubbard's and Bridgewater, because that's the area that I was sort of thinking if it's going to be a tourism, it should be along that belt or something. I've lived in the city mostly, Ten Talon. I have a lot of friends around Bridgewater. I did some Google mapping and saw the patch of land up across upon Hawthorne there that was empty. So, I inquired, I think it's the city, all just to see if the town owned it or who owned it or whatever. I mean, that's a big enough of a spot, unused, you could, you know, acquire that or partner with it or whatever. And I discovered, well, I've heard of this poss- possibility that there might be a new fire hall or something on the go and that the current fire hall may or may not be available at some point in the future. Anyway, real preliminary, but I just wanted to make the inquiry to see if there's anything, either that building, maybe someone else has some other ideas of something that would be, you know, suitable for that sort of thing. So, I see the steps of, A, is there, is there anything like that that people live in the town? B, is there any interest in having something like that? To me, it'd be adding a little bit of a tourism asset to the thing people were, come in to look for it or bother in town and other stuff. To look at. And then see if one of those conditions are met, what would be the imaginations of making that happen? Partnership, purchase. Too much to?
Well, we took four of your 10 minutes.
I was, I was playing on the wood too, so, but yeah, so that's the gist of it. Again, real preliminary, but I thought I would inquiry of the municipality of Lunenburg a bit ago because I was, at one point, I was looking up for Chester. I just started looking about 18 months or so ago, the old block of school where I went to school as well. Would have been a perfect thing, but that's sold to the gentleman who has it now. Because it's, there's a gymnasium there, you can jam a handful of cars in there. It's a classroom, it's going to be made up. There's a big field in the front there. You can put in a little building, a little bay to do some work or paint bay or whatever the case may be. I've chatted with him a couple of times. I actually have three or four of my cars up there at the moment. But he's content there, obviously. He's got a good deal with it. Just the center school was there, but it's so huge and I guess it's a, it's a monstrosity of a building and a gong show in terms of detonations and stuff because they had to fix the buses and stuff over there, you know, when I was a kid. The report they mentioned, again, this sort of too far away for me is not the red. It's quite the great name. Anyway, my search continues. And again, I thought even if I can get into the years of another handful of people who might have ideas like, oh, that wasn't fit for here, but golly, I heard in Western Shore, I heard some guy in Bridgewater or Oak Hill is selling something. He's got a patch of dirt or something like that. Anyway, that was my, that was my question before the presentation.
So, I love the idea. My first boyfriend had a Gremlin, it was purple, right? So, these are nostalgic vehicles, I guess. So, anyway, I like the idea. And I was wondering if you have approached the, any of the chambers of commerce with the idea just because they're so tied into the business community and might have some sort of further reach in terms of what they're aware may be available? And to that end, there is an economic development committee of council and I wondered if that was kind of a conduit we could perhaps mention? And unfortunately, Councilor Bain is not here today and he's the chair of that committee. But it may be something that, you know, could be mentioned to the chamber of commerce through them as there are members on the committee. So, that was one of the ideas I had. You already covered a bunch of the other ones, you know, because old school buildings and things, repurposing those, of course, came to mind first. But that would be one suggestion I wanted to check with you to see if that had been done.
Yeah, hadn't, and so, yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a good idea. I had talked to a couple of the dealerships in town in Bridgewater. Again, just because I thought if I could marry this up with, you know, this is my passion playing with cars and stuff like that. I mean, I've been working for a thousand years too, doing the same stuff as the way that they have an underused or underused building or piece of robbery that we can sort of, you know, work with them under their, not under their auspices, at least with their cooperation. Or me has heard on rent or lease or whatever because I, that's, I've had a couple of discussions on the go with that as well. It's formed up and it's a good idea and I haven't put.
Yeah?
May?
Thank you for having me. It's really exciting to be here. I'm living up in Ottawa and I've come back for a week. I personally am lobbying my dad to pick Mahone Bay for the center for all of this. I'm looking at moving back myself shortly. So, I think that this town's really exciting. I love the character of it. I've spent a lot of time with my grandmother in here and it's been a lot of fun watching as dad's collection of these poopy old cars has grown. I grew up going to school in Mavericks and Pintos and Gremlins, all the ones that blow up. So, this is, as much as this particular idea, you know, you say often that it's quite new, quite fledgling. This is a passion that's lasted a long time. He's invested a lot into it. And what my dad is too humble to tell you about himself is that this isn't going to be the first project that he's taken on and seen through, even though conditions aren't always ideal. My dad took a $30,000 grant from McCullough when I was young and turned it into a 110-person business in the high-tech industry.
Which is not what we're doing here.
Which is not what we're doing here. But, you know, he's really passionate about this and he wants to take a personal collection and turn it into something for the community. And if I can, for a moment, speak to some of the ideas that he's had, that he doesn't necessarily have the time to speak to. My dad wants to use this space as a community hub. It's not just about the cars. He's looking for a building that he can use to receive people, that if it's big enough, he could use it for car clubs to get together for community events to come and be in this space. One of the things that I thought was most exciting about this idea is that he's targeting a demographic that isn't always easily reached through traditional outreach. These aren't necessarily the kinds of people who are going to show up at your town councils. They're not necessarily going to answer your surveys. Damn, if they can find a cool old car rally, they might just turn out for that. So, I think this is an opportunity to create a space in your municipality for people who don't necessarily feel great in common areas. He is already exploring some sponsorship options. And of all of the towns along the southern shore of Nova Scotia, I think that Mahone Bay is the one where this kind of a museum would best complement the tourist attractions that you already have. It's not, you know, Lunenburg with the big art gallery streets. This is a sweet little town that you drive through. So, to have a tribute to the South Shore, the history that we have with all these dealerships back and forth, I think that you've got something really neat here. And I know that my dad would bring a lot of value to the community. And if there is a way forward, any way forward, I think that it would be exciting to pursue together.
Okay.
Thanks for your company, you helped myself.
Appreciate your presentation and.
It's on the radar.
It is on the radar.
Right.
I think as Councilor Neal suggested, we might mention to Councilor Bain, just to pass the information along to the economic development committee, I remember one Adam 12th. And I would ask you whether they are numbers matching. In particular, the 390 four-speed AMX, is it a numbers matching car?
This is my, my 70 AMX four-speed. It's, with AMC, it's, they don't quite, they don't quite call it numbers matching. It is an original drive train car because unlike Fords and the Chev's and the Dodges where they did, I just think a bunch of numbers to associate stuff, AMC didn't get around to that. Yeah, so you can't really tell one engine block from a 70 AMX to a 70 Rebel. They're all pretty much the same, so. But yes, that semi AMX, I don't know if you've seen it around, but it's up in, here in my, up in the garage. It's a, it's an original drive cave train car, that's a nice car. I do have an Adam 12 tribute car. I do have another car that's in Arizona, which is an actual LAPD retired car, 401 car that will be coming up. I just hauled home from New Jersey about three weeks or so ago, 71 Javelin, which is not that interesting. I have a couple of Javelins, but this one was one of 10 remaining cars that were used by the Alabama Highway Patrol in 71 and 72 as pursuit vehicles. It was the only time, it was the first time that any US force had used a pony car or like a Mustang or a Javelin as a pursuit car. So, I have one of those that I plan to.
Is there a 61 Ford black and white car? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next on the agenda, deputy fire chief Adam Ekins. The hot topic of the night. The fire department's quarterly report.
I guess everyone saw the report.
Sure did. Another busy quarter.
Yep. I think in lab we've got something about, we're going to try and use the old Masonic Lodge for a training event.
Yes, yeah.
It's for Bain in the end of August or the beginning of September.
But you're not going to burn it?
We could, I guess. No, it's not the training, but we're just, just lots of different practices, BA, ladders, smooth line. Just it's a good building that we can, you know, actually get in, roam around, drive back air through. Yeah, just not worried about it.
What was, what was the first term you used, BA?
Yeah, breathing app.
Oh, breathing app, thank you.
Yeah, we have a meeting on Tuesday to sort of try and finalize some of our ideas of what we're going to do with that. I know we were hoping to need to try and use the hydrant that was close by. Probably wouldn't be flowing a lot of water, but it'd just be nice to hook up and actually use some of the water from it. Just good practice. I think we're going to try and speak with water department about that.
Is this something that you would advise the public was going to happen?
Yep, yeah.
So, would you have people on hand to deal with the crowd? I'm assuming a lot of people might come and see it.
Yeah, there would probably be enough people that.
To warrant some crowd control.
Crowd control, yeah.
Okay.
It might, I guess, depend on what we come up with, maybe partial road closure. Really depends on sort of how many other departments we can get interested in, sort of what we might have for numbers to.
So, we're talking block hosts, margins, river?
Yep, yeah, pretty much all the local departments we have mutually. So, probably, probably trying to get that ladder truck. And, yeah, a lot of departments in the area.
Going to be a good show.
Yeah, something to look out for.
It would be noticed as going up to all the local residents. And I've been talking with Megan. And so, if we get permission.
The water department?
Yeah. If we get permission to use the hydrants, then of course it would be noticed, go up to the residents, advising them that they might need some water pressure and that type of thing, so. And we'll probably do a door-to-door on Claremont Street because that's going to be the main road that's closed.
Councilor Carver? I've had a question, but I also just wanted to comment that I think the idea of letting the public know and so they might come and watch, I mean, that would be fascinating, absolutely fascinating, old and young, everybody.
I know, I know when we do go out on practice, like, I can't remember the name of the condos up the end of town by our piazza. We were in there sort of doing, yeah, the, we were in there doing a scenario when sort of everyone came out and was asking what was going on.
Sure.
So, so my question was, what is the difference between mutual aid calls and fire and other calls? I mean, how, what's the distinction?
So, mutual aid would be when we're called in by another department to help them.
Okay.
So, and the other call could just be like what we were called for directly.
So, the fire and other calls category, you were calling first?
Yeah, and they would be in our area.
Uh huh, okay. And Strum's Island?
Yeah.
What was going on over there?
Oh, I don't think they would do that.
They were burning on the island and somebody on the mainland just thought it was a fire because it appeared above the building, so.
So, how did you respond to that one?
I made a phone call to the island.
Yeah.
We had our boat ready to go if it needed to go.
I was wondering if you actually went out or not.
No, but, yeah, I have the cell phone number for the guy that's on the island, so I called him to, hey, what's going on?
And if you hadn't reached them, you guys would have had to.
They would have.
Did we apply and receive funding for new respirators? Do I recall that correctly?
Well, we've.
Or we put in an application for funding?
We put in an application.
Have, have we heard anything on that yet?
No, but the deadline was only late June, so.
We now have.
Oh, you have?
We already purchased them.
Oh, okay, here's.
There you go. I mean, at the end of the day, it's, you know, we'll either get the money back or we won't.
Yeah, no, fair enough.
Oh, I see.
I guess that was my question about training on, on, are the new vintage of the, of them different than the old ones? So, I was just kind of curious where we were on the acquisition of the new, up to next generation.
I know we have four, I think.
The last one's arrived yesterday.
The last one's here.
So, hence the requirement for training too, I guess.
When is the timing of the, the training that you're doing at the Masons' old hall? What, around what timeframe?
We haven't decided yet.
I'm just wondering, and we're always looking, we're always sort of earmarking topics of major community interest for inclusion in the mayor's newsletter and I wondered if that would be a fun one to put in.
It'll probably go from anywhere from eight till around noon.
It would have to go.
It's got me in the morning.
I mean, on the day.
I'll say.
On the day.
On the day, that's what I'm saying, but probably from eight in the morning.
The first of August would be the due date for any of that kind of information for the month of August.
Right.
So, if, certainly if the fire department has got it available. I think we have something in the newsletter anyway about the event. And then if we don't have specific times, then they can, suggest that they would go to either the fire department's face or website or the town's website and find out when the specific time is.
As Adam mentioned, we're having a meeting Tuesday night with all the other departments. So, we'll probably touch down to the chase into times.
The times.
And whenever you get it settled, if you let Maureen know, we'll put it on our social media now that we have one.
I have a 10-year-old who's going to want to.
Yeah, that's right.
Hey, I've got a 70-year-old.
They'll probably have some alarms going on that.
Good, 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 good.
Thank you.
Is that it?
I have a quick question, just the false alarms, those are automated alarms?
Um, a lot of them are automated from smoke detectors, detectors, things like that in buildings.
And Maureen, just maybe a question for you as opposed to the fire department, although feel free to answer. We don't have a false alarm by law, do we?
We do.
Isn't the penalty recently increased for that?
No, we had, last year, the chief and I noticed some issues and we had to re-pass the bylaw to ensure everything is done. So, it's last summer, I believe, that was we finished.
We had some false alarm issues and we were trying to resolve.
Yeah.
Tell them about it, it hadn't actually gone through, so.
I'm glad it's been exercised, so if any of these are repeat false alarm calls, we would, we would bring that into the attention of.
Yeah, let's say, but that's all settled now, right?
Yeah.
By law?
Yes, the bylaw is all settled.
And you were going to send it away last year.
Yeah, that's all done. We did the second reading, I think it was last summer.
Do we have a copy of that?
I don't think so.
I, I can make sure you have one.
There you go, I'm glad I asked.
I do have one last question. There's been quite a bit with the weather and all of the heat, there's been a number of news articles around dogs being left in vehicles. Does the fire department, does this fire department respond to those kinds of calls? And if so, would they be on those, would that be included in the report?
We have never had any of those calls.
You haven't?
I, I think I can respond to that one. The, in this area, the advice is to call the police.
Okay.
I take it you saw the pictures on the Facebook of the Subaru and.
Every firefighter's dream. It'd be my dream come true.
It was a Subaru parked in front of a hide.
Oh, that, oh, yes, yes.
And they couldn't get the hose connected, somebody smashed the windows out of the car and put the hose right through the car. And the guy got fined and he had two broken windows to replace.
The woman got fined.
Woman, oh, pardon me.
Guy doesn't have to be gendered these days anyway.
There you go. No, it doesn't seem like it is. Any other questions? Adam?
Thank you.
And thank you to all the firefighters for what they're doing for us up there. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Okay, let's go to correspondence. We have no action items, but we do have three information items.
We receive and file the three information items.
Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded, question?
Just a question, because some of these have opportunities for funding and I wondered if they were, if our CAO could just comment on, you know, when you receive them, how you process them?
Yeah, absolutely. The first one there, low-carbon communities in Connect Two, we actually have a report later in this agenda that references my recommendation as far as applying to that program. You know, pretty much when I see the new application windows come out, I look back on the budget. If we're doing our jobs, we're almost never surprised. So, usually, like with the Connect Two program, it's a recurring program and we've already budgeted on except going to that program. But when it comes to something like low-carbon communities, there's a lot of different things that are in council's budget that theoretically could connect to that program. So, we always go through and assess, is this the year? Do we have, you know, is this a better source of funding than other alternate sources of funding? And then we do a staff report if we're recommending it. I'm not entirely sure yet on low-carbon communities because we did get that funding last year and they only approved three. So, since we were one of three last year, I'm thinking, because we don't usually succeed in those situations, that we might give it a rest. But I'm still looking and I might bring a recommendation to the first September meeting.
Thank you.
Councilor Carver?
I just have a quick question about the, the second point, the solar electricity. Can you tell me again what our position is on selling back electricity? Well, or the, a property owner selling it to us, us buying and them selling?
Well, we don't currently have a program to accommodate that in our regulations. So, the last time we went and set our regulations was long before rooftop solar was the growing concern that it is right now. So, to begin with, you'd be expected to offset your own energy use. And if you actually generated surplus, we'd have to work with the, you know, presumably in this case, because the town has a specific amount under this program that we would, we would provide. I don't know if, I think that's in the attachment. If not, it's somewhere. Then I think that is the limit to what we'd be working with a nonprofit, whatever nonprofit it was, in terms of the difference between the rate that we would buy it back from them in, under this program and the rate that you would otherwise pay for electricity. But then again, this program is slightly, you're negotiating on the price. So, it's slightly different from a homeowner.
Uh, okay, I was thinking of private homeowners.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, this one, the, essentially as a nonprofit, you pitch what you think you can generate it for. And then the utility has a certain limit that we're obligated to come up to. Yeah, you're welcome. I had to get a couple of questions answered because being as, you know, we're municipal, what is the difference in our territory versus in the country about it?
Any other questions? Okay, let's.
Did we vote?
Did we vote?
Oh, no, we didn't vote. We just asked their call and thrown it in. All in favor? Motion's carried. Now, we'll go to the staff reports to council. Mr. CAO?
Well, this is the general report first, quite lengthy, so I'll take questions. I'm not going to go through it except where there are questions.
I love the stats on the traffic information. That's been a huge improvement. Specifically, the Pleasant Street information, which was really interesting that, that that speed sign has such a positive effect when it does periodically show up. The, like, the layout, the layout Dylan and the rest of the staff, I mean, this has really improved so much over the last 18 months. It's incredible.
Good.
And on the weekend.
It's a work in progress too, it'll keep getting better.
There was one particular day, there were two cars, two marked police cars on Main Street. Two different, like, two winds of it. And then you kind of went past one and thought, ha ha, I got away with it. There's the next person waiting on you. Yeah, they're out there.
Wanted to ask about the utility review board meeting on the 22nd of August. Highly, what, what is the process for that meeting? Is that a public meeting and open?
That's the water rate setting piece?
The water rate study.
Yeah, it is certainly open for anyone to attend. If you, there's, there's kind of two statuses that you can obtain to participate. So, the, and Mo, you might remember the dates, I'm not sure, but the date to register as an intervenor, which would be that this, you feel has a profound financial impact on you, that is passed. I don't know if anyone, I believe it is passed. I don't know that anyone has registered on that because I'm not sure if the deadline for us to be notified of that has also passed. But at some point in early August, we would. for us to be notified of that has also passed, but at some point in early August, we would know for sure about that part. And then there is an option to read, ask, request to speak at the session. I think you have to do it the day before, or there are, there are some provisions, so certainly check out the notice, because I'm, I'm butchering it, and we, the town has published notice on exactly how you can participate.
We have our, our consultants kind of running, running that agenda on our behalf.
Yeah, myself and the two consultants, Jerry and Blaine, would represent those.
Okay, fair enough. Looking forward to that. It's gonna be a bit of a learning experience to observe.
The board certainly puts you through your paces for sure on it.
Yeah, it's, it's, I went to the last one that we had, and it's quite an interesting process, and it, it's quite an involved process as well.
Well, Luke was surprised by how many, because they come back with the information requests, so you file, it seems like you've done all the due diligence in the world, so you guys saw the report, it's a huge report. They came back with a good sixty information requests that, and I said, Luke, that's not that bad. Last time I did it in Shelburne, a hundred and forty-five. So, yeah, they really are thorough.
Counselor O'Neill.
Question about the parking enforcement. The, that, those are tickets issued by the bylaw control officer, correct?
Yes.
And are those, generally speaking, I see that seven were issued. Two questions, I guess. Are, are warnings, are parking warnings ever issued by that, by the officer? First question. And are these tickets for, generally for overnight parking, or are they for blocking things generally?
I, I will say that the second, they're not generally for overnight parking, because he's here in almost all cases during the regular business day, so it is for parking and sign, no parking or blocking things. Mo, do you wanna comment on the first part?
To the first one, and when he's issued a parking ticket that's been recorded, that's a summary offense ticket that's been issued. We do not have a warning in that respect. However, he does take a, he, the purpose of enforcement is to see that the bylaws, the, that we have in place for reasons are adhered to. So the purpose is not to give a ticket, it's to, for example, keep that area clean, please don't park your car in front of that fire hydrant. So whenever he's able, if he sees someone, if he talks to someone, whenever possible, he will, you know, he looks around a bit, if there's someone that's running going, oh, no, no, he'll take the opportunity to speak to them rather than give them the ticket. So while he does not have a warning ticket that he issues, he does in fact have a lot of, issue a lot of verbal warnings, have a lot of conversation, and the focus is more on that education to, you know, don't park here again. We'd ask that you notice signs like this, that you, you know, keep a safe distance from the intersection, that sort of thing. But there's no recording, because it's not a ticket.
And, and although it won't show up in the stats, we are working on, do you wanna comment?
Yeah, we've developed an educational ticket, per se. Again, it's not the same, it's not a ticket that we would necessarily record, or we haven't thought that far ahead with it, I guess, it's something we might consider. But in situations where we have events that bring a lot of people to town, we want to think about, if you think of, say, the Scarecrow Festival last year, you have to look at your priorities, you know? Keep the fire hydrants clear, keep the intersections clear, that's gonna be your priority over the no parking sign, because, you know, we have various reasons, but we have to really hit the highlights. So we've developed educational tickets to encourage people, when they get back to their car, to say, oh, I shouldn't have parked there, and, you know, please think of where you parked next time, that sort of thing. There are a lot of reasons for that, one of them being that if we give a ticket to someone who's got a rental car, they're here from Calvary, we're not getting that payment anyway, but.
But we should stress that these would be applied based on date and time.
Yes.
Not based on Al's assessment as to whether a vehicle is local.
No, that's a good point. And so, and that's why we have to focus on what is the primary safety concern. So these tickets look like a regular parking ticket as well. So the other part of this, while we don't necessarily have, I can't necessarily take the time to go through every single one, we have to focus on the priorities, there is an opportunity for the next person driving along to say, oh, everybody's been ticketed along here. So they serve both purposes for that enforcement and education piece.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had been giving some thought to this topic over the last couple of days, knowing that we're about to have a lot of people parking due to some of the festivals that are coming into town. And the last festival that, that we had, I noticed there was a lot of street parking, and then when I walked past the town hall, there are a lot of empty spaces that say town hall parking only, and I wondered if the town would consider just creating maybe some coverings for those signs to say festival parking, which would open up six or seven additional spots during the festivals, just on Saturdays and Sundays.
I have actually never encountered a busy weekend where our parking spaces were empty. Because, you know, it's like coming off a weekend or something.
This way it wouldn't only be the most scary.
They won't feel guilty.
Or the fear that you may get a ticket while you're trying to, you know, enjoy the festival.
People assume the town hall is closed on.
And we've been talking about temporary signage to be used during events, and we've mostly thought about, you know, adding clarifying restrictive signage, but I really liked the idea of temporarily allowing more parking. Yeah, I can't see the harm in it. I'm more concerned about the way our parking lot's used when we are here, so.
And the U-turns that people do.
Yeah, exactly. I'd really like to put up a no-turn sign, to be honest, but I know a lot of people really count on this as a place to do their turns.
They can do it through the street. I mean, you know.
Go around the block, yeah.
Guilty as charged.
The Mahombe roundabout.
Right.
I had a question about the operating officers' section. Section three, cemeteries and open spaces, and the comment was that keeping those areas clear, but because I went up Hawthorne Hill today and down, and noticed, as I have before, that the area around, behind the fire station, around the tennis court, that looks pretty shabby. It's just very, it's overgrown and, and looks shabby. So I, I don't know if, if that's an area that town crews here periodically, just to sort of keep it down, keep it level.
So when you say around the tennis court, is it like on all sides, between tennis court and the parking, or between tennis court and the trail? Just all the way around?
It's all the way around the tennis court.
I remember traditionally from the tennis court to the trail was always a bit of a question in terms of maintenance, I don't know, but, yeah, I'll ask Derek to check.
And there's a lot of cradles and, and both trailers, the other side of the tennis court that almost precludes, you gotta mold them before you put them in there.
Yeah. But, but between the street, between the road and the tennis court, or between the area where the cradles are stored, it's, it's just a very shabby kind of growth that would, it'd be nice to see it needn't sort of town pride.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I had another question about the finance section, and number three, the finance. It was about the provincial reporting. He said we, we had submitted, submitted our information and what we're, it was accepted, and then we were later told that there were issues. Can you explain that some more?
I can explain it a little bit. This is a really long-running issue that we've had, dates back to when our former C A O was here. My understanding from Scott and Bongstang at Municipal Affairs is that traditionally, we would run into this issue every year with the F I R, and Jim would eventually get them to a place where they accepted what he had provided. I, I won't necessarily say that they ever felt it was rectified, because the same issue would come up the following year. So at Audit Committee earlier this month, the finance manager made a recommendation with regards to the preparation of non-consolidated town general statements, and that will essentially mean that when this year's audit is complete, then as, because the audit has to show the prior year, seventeen, eighteen is gonna be reconciled as a part of that process. So it's underway now, but at the latest, this year's audit process will, will clear the issue for last year and going forward. And it is, you know, the province is very understanding, Moda just here said, you know, very understanding. At the same time, you know, Luke and I do feel badly, this is not how we would like to do the report, and so after this year, we'll have them.
Thank, thank you, and I, because I had an absence from the audit committee, I couldn't pick that up.
Okay, yes, because that, yeah, we did discuss this.
Tagging off the longstanding practice around consolidation.
Yeah. You, you are being turd and feathered as a result of someone else's activity.
It's just was our, our convention.
Yeah, it was our practice, you know, and at the end of the day, I think we've gone over the benefits of, of changing the practice, and people have agreed to it.
Yeah. And, and to be frank, I mean, the practice before was entirely above board, and, and there was no, this is just a presentation, presentation of the information is slightly different way.
And we're trying to make it reconcile with the province, and.
Yeah, sure.
At the end of the day, that doesn't mean that what we were producing was in any way problematic for our purposes, it just wasn't reconciling with the province's system.
We did discuss, we did discuss at the, at the Audit Committee meeting how these financial, the new, the new format is actually going to probably improve our, our results. At least that would be my expectation, so we'll see.
Yeah, will reflect better on us, is what I guess in terms of.
Different slicing and dicing of the numbers.
I noticed that, that Modal had Carolyn Baller for Katzen in, she's doing an article in the Social Breaker now, and so she, her last one was about saying how good their report was. So we got our back finally, we can do the same. But, but it's a good piece of public education, public information.
I, I think it's worth, it's always worthwhile to let the public know what the, what the people in this building are doing, and how well they do do it.
Yeah.
And if we do get the F C I's and express them, I think it's important to tell the story too, because it's often portrayed, and I don't know how Carolyn portrayed it, because I haven't read it, as if all you want is greens. The province is saying, you know, green is good, get in the green. But a lot of the time, being proactive actually means having a long-term strategy that will not always involve being green. And that's the right thing to do over the long term, especially for towns with the amount of investment that we have to make. That being said, I'll, I'll probably do a report on them when we have them.
Okay. Let's move to the business plan. Dylan, are you gonna speak to that?
Yeah, well, I can, we've got a recommendation in the staff report, but all this is the first year we've done this, so essentially as a tool for the public and for council, we're going to produce an annual business plan. It's a pretty standard thing for government departments and municipalities, but not always for municipalities our size. But most of the work is done the first year, and after that, it gets a lot easier, because you're mending from a starting document, so. So hopefully this is of value to council, and for the public, I think it would provide a lot more information, because many of you would have a sense of our organizational structure and department tasks and things, but I think a lot of the public don't.
Thought this was terrific. Mayor, I'd be happy to move that council approved the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty business plan as presented.
Second the motion.
Seconded by the deputy mayor. Thank you, Counselor Feeney.
I just have a typo.
Question?
A typo.
Oh, sure. Thank you.
In the second paragraph of the chief administrative officer's message, ready to delivery, ready to deliver.
Oh, thank you. Mo, do you see that?
No, it's not from where I am, but I made a note.
I just wanna make sure between us.
And I have another question, if I may, sir.
Please.
Page four, in the diagram, where did the fire department go? There used to be, our former organograms, there used to be a fire department.
That's a very good point. It should at least be where our C N P is, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, well, thank you, Benny, that's, that's a really good one. We thought we had a full, full page as it is. It's surprising right there, it's on there.
On page six, I said managing, in, I can't even write it. Managing, with the word managing, we're page six, we're managing partnerships.
Oh, yes, I see.
It just seemed a funny word to be using, managing partnerships.
Management of intermunicipal partnerships. Yeah, I mean, I see it as this in, in terms of being relationship management, so I manage our relationships with all of these organizations between official board meetings. I don't know what to, I mean, it's not a liaison, because we have an influence on them. So I'm, I'm happy for thesaurus suggestions, but.
Part of my question too was then how does it relate to what the mayor is doing in relation to some of those intermunicipal partnerships too? Is the mayor managing or not? What, what's the relationship?
So you mean in terms of participation on the boards and?
Managing the intermunicipal relationships.
No, I just, so I don't have a vote on any of the boards. What, what the mayor and the board members are doing in that regard is directing those organizations. So kinda like the way council plays the role that you do here, the board of, of M J S B or, or Area does that, but in between the quarterly meetings, say, for Area, the once-a-week meetings and, you know, several, probably a day and a half a week goes into actually doing the work the C A Os do, so I think of it as akin to what we do internally.
Is it coordinating then? I, I don't wanna belabor, I don't wanna belabor the issue.
But hinges on that, that notion of, of managing.
It, it just stood out for me, so.
I went through, I mean, I agree with you. I went through overseeing, I would, you know, and, yeah.
Well, think about coordinating.
I just think it needs to be clear that it is more than a liaison or more than an information.
And admin, the admin, in the admin section, drafting or creating bylaws, and I thought, oh, that's an odd word. I thought it was more drafting bylaws, but it's just a suggestion, throwing it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would suggest that it's.
I mean, probably slightly more in the word creation, because it implies seeing it through to being accepted. But what we're, what we're doing is we're drafting it, and then we're responding to council's input and redrafting it, so.
But you're also.
Unless Mo has any objections, as her's actually.
You're gathering council's input in the process of developing that policy as well.
And then redrafting it, but I think we could say drafting.
Thank you for entertaining all the questions.
Yeah, no, it's good, and it shows that you really read it through, so that's always good. Does anybody else have?
There you go.
Anybody else have any?
Any other questions?
With some slight amendment.
So as, as amended.
Yeah.
As amended. That's the motion. As amended. Just Counselor Feeney and Deputy Mayor. All in favor? Motion's carried. Okay, let's go to donation meters.
So this was recently requested.
We have a staff report.
We've provided some consideration of the subject and the recommendation, so if anyone wants to move or ask questions, I'll get it up on the screen.
But you did a really good job of pulling that together and developing a rationale that I certainly agree with. So I, once I get this up to one twenty-five percent, will make the motion to direct staff to develop, no, we didn't, I have to go farther down, sorry. Sorry, everybody. I'm gonna make the motion.
It is Yellow Island.
I'm getting there. Okay. The council approved the installation of donation meters on town property based on locations in which the town has existing relationships with not-for-profit organizations that manage or contribute to that space.
Move, seconded by Counselor Now. You have a question?
I do have a question. Your part is, is clear. The one piece that I wasn't sure I understood was where you, where you specify that the meters would be on town property for the benefit of the organization that's directly located at that property. Are you considering cooling that, that money and then distributing it in equal measures to all of those organizations? Or for example, any money that's collected in front of the tennis court goes to the tennis court?
This recommendation is that each meter be associated with the organization in that location. And Maureen did give a little consideration in the staff report to the idea that we would centrally administer it, but it, it is a lot more of a logistical challenge as well.
So the challenge that I would have to it is that, for example, the pool, if there was, for example, a meter of the pool, and my son, for example, or any of his friends, has twenty-five cents, they are gonna walk past that meter and buy a freezy. Whereas, do you know what I mean? Like, so there's certain locations where you might get a lot of people, but and, and they certainly, you know, could use the, the funds, but you're, you may not get the sort of level of donations that you might get, for example, in front of the town hall, and so my preference would be to, to take all of the monies collected and distribute it to these identified, to this identified list of recipients in an equal measure.
Yeah, I had, I had almost the exact same opinion. That was exactly where my head was. Because there's such a gap between the premium geographic locations, you know, if someone puts a donation meter in front of the post office, for example, or, you know, in front of the town hall, high-traffic area, you're likely, so there'll be a, a bit of a, there needs, so if you believe this policy will be in place for years and years down the road, I mean, how many? I think this is an excellent first start. I think that the meters need to be registered so that we can make sure that the, that the not-for-profits are still going concerns as some not-for-profits have ebbs and flows and some go extinct. So there needs to be a way that, that they can't just be repurposed, if they're gonna get repurposed to another, and there needs to be some kind of a, it needs to be fair so that as, as new community sanctioned organizations show up, they're not gonna be squeezed out because we already have 25 meters and all the good locations are, are booked. So either you can apply for a three-year period and then we, we, we issue a lottery and we say, hey, there's a lottery. We've got seven spots for the next four years. Any community organization wants to apply to the lottery. And then, but in four years, we'll, it needs to somehow, you know, it needs to somehow be fair that any, any charitable organization can, can get a access to one of the municipally-owned locations.
Yeah, because these are only the ones on town-owned property, right? They're not the ones that are on here on private property.
So just on Joe's recommendation, so I just wanna make the distinction between the idea that, because right now the motion's on the floor. It's just to accept what's there, but the, the other ideas that have been raised. One is to still keep the relationship factor in this motion. So it wouldn't be all nonprofits. It would be nonprofits with a service relationship with the town having to do with town-owned properties. But to remove that meter being the only way in which they were donating by pooling the meters at all these properties. Whereas to your point about like, any nonprofit deserves to be able to get in on this money, I mean, that's an option, but the, the recommendation here, I think it needs to be referenced that there are some nonprofits that do things to benefit the properties owned by the town.
Yes.
And, and that was the suggestion. Now, it still could be for other nonprofits, but.
So, so the, the monies that the nonprofits would collect, that would be distributed possibly equally among them, but their expenditures would be somehow linked back into the town?
Well, I think in this particular circumstance, I think trying to see where you're leading this, Dylan, is that we, this is, this is an outcome of, of a specific request from a specific service organization.
Yes.
That has made massive commu, massive donations to the community over years. So I'm certainly perfectly willing to, you know, vote on this, this recommend, this amend, this recommendation and motion and support it. I'm just suggesting that, that will certainly allow us to address the immediate project, the immediate request. But going forward, I think we'll see many, many requests come forward as this, as this very successful fundraising project, you know, becomes more popular. So we'll have one at the government warf, I'm all for it. We can have a hundred of them, as far as I'm concerned, as long as they're, it, it's just, it needs to be equitable. That's, that's all, the only suggestion I'll make.
And you're very right in interpreting the idea with this motion being that we would still only respond to the requests.
Right.
So one place that we don't have this kind of relationship with any nonprofit that was referenced was the town hall.
Right.
If there was a desire to proactively put one in, so let's say this motion passed and we say, we're gonna sit back, we're gonna get requests, we only had the one. But the town hall, let's just put a meter here and say, that meter, that meter's proceeds will be determined to go to, you know, nonprofits that are not represented.
Fair enough.
Something like that.
That doesn't go along with the motion.
That would be a separate decision council need to make. Yeah, no, I'm just saying council could make another motion to install one here in the town office if we wanted.
Yeah, the only other suggestion is this is essentially, this is essentially a, a right-of-way or an easement on a town property. Now, it only is gonna be four inches by four inches. But it needs to be some kind of a, there needs to be some kind of a, a document between the town and the, the organization that if, for whatever reason, we needed to remove the, remove the meter to put in a fire item, we would, we'd be able to do that.
Well, if we don't have any documentation, then we can do that. So.
Anyway, Dylan, you've got it well in hand, I'm sure. You've thought of all that, so. So would we like to, are we going to move on this?
Are we finished? You made the motion?
I did.
And you seconded it? Anyone else have any questions? All in favor? Motion's carried. Okay. Now, the question, we have the transportation plan.
Where should I move the council's direct staff to apply to the Connect Two program? Fifteen thousand to support the department development of Town Home Bay Transportation Plan.
Move seconded. On the question. Counselor Kerber?
Hold on, I have to find, get myself up to 125 again. I had a question. What, what is 15,000 gonna buy us?
So 15,000 is to bring us up to a total budget of 30. And 30 is estimated based on looking at the other more recent communities that've gone out for a transportation plan. So Kentville did recently at that price. Standardly, it buys you some combination based on the scope that we would write up of public consultation, tracking such as pedestrian tracking, which we talked about, police advisory, and engineering designs. And the engineering designs is definitely the most costly part. And if anything becomes a recommendation from the plan rather than a part of the plan, it would be doing the plan with less engineering and then recommending as part of that. Then the motion from Police Advisory talks about recommendations coming out of the plan. Some of those recommendations might involve the bigger engineering pieces that couldn't be accommodated within the plan. So if we say we wanna redesign an intersection, there might be a preliminary sketch, but the surveying work and, you know, the, the more detailed work wouldn't have been completed as part of this plan.
So that would be a separate project?
Yeah, yeah. So that will be the limit, I think, in terms of what we can't do in this plan.
Okay, so.
Beyond some, like a minor crossing design that is gonna be standard for a couple, I think you could do that, but I just.
And is it going to answer questions such as around the, some of the suggestions that were made at the Police Advisory Committee earlier today? For example, increasing the number of crosswalks on Main and Interwater.
Crosswalk placement and guidelines around how crosswalks need to be signed or lit and where they would be granted, that would definitely be a component.
That would be part of it. May I have a second question?
You certainly can. You're two for one.
The, the content or the text, the included a reference to all travel under two kilometers is recommended as being active transportation. So I, I couldn't see any reference to people with physical challenges like me or who, who can't manage two kilometers. So where will that feature come into?
Well, I think that's part of why we're looking at it as a transportation plan. And this is in consultation with Department of Energy to run the Connect Two program rather than just a active transportation plan. So, you know, obviously active transportation needs to be for all ability levels, ages, everything. And, you know, as much as possible, infrastructure should be designed based on the idea that, you know, if anyone possibly can actively create two kilometers, then we need to make it more possible for them. But beyond that, if you simply can't, the transportation plan needs to consider how you will. And it's not gonna be in the form of making detailed recommendations for each scenario, but certainly it's assumed then that you either need a private automobile or access to some form of shared transit program. And we're trying to also include the idea that could that be electric? Because Department of Energy, of course, is the one that's in charge for electric vehicle adoption. So some things that have come up, just as possibilities, include things like an electric vehicle ride-share program. You know, so, so things like that might be identified as things that we might wanna pursue.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to flag it because I didn't see any reference to the addressing a range of abilities.
Yeah, well, we'll just have to think about that when we're scoping it if we do get the funding.
There are just two points on this. One, I believe this is, this was an appropriation that was authorized through the budget process. I believe this is well, well vetted and litigated at that point. Other thing, you know, as you recall, like I was not a advocate for this to be prioritized in the budget process. It seemed to me that it's time hadn't yet come. But I must be honest with you, my, my thinking about this has really evolved in the, you know, since, since March, especially in consultation with some folks that are strongly involved in the local biking community. And then we've just recently had a number of huge bike events through the community. And a number of those folks who I did speak with talked about some of the infrastructure decisions that the municipalities were making or weren't making. And they really thought that there were some terrific opportunities being left on the table because they just didn't have the kind of information to allow people to validate whether it made any sense to, for example, extend the roadway by three feet to accommodate, you know, safer bike, biking, for example, especially with all the work down on meters code. So anyway, I think this is gonna be deemed in time to be really money well spent. And as you know, so if anybody can change their spots on an issue, I think we're, you just saw, you saw that happen. So I stand corrected and I hope this works out well.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor? All in favor? Motion's carried. Unanimous night tonight. Okay, let's go to the water billing issue.
So I'm, I'm sorry with the water billing that I didn't give you quite as specific of a recommendation to go from. But I have given some consideration and presented this scenario. To my knowledge, council hasn't been asked and therefore hasn't determined whether you would weigh in on this type of a scenario. And you absolutely don't need to, but the question was put and I need to give them a response, so.
When you say we don't need to, what, what do you mean?
Uh, council doesn't have to grant any relief in this.
Oh, we don't need to grant it. I don't, okay, I thought you meant we don't have to weigh in on it.
Well, I mean.
It seems to me that we had two scenarios as it relates to recovery of property tax that was well-handled last year through negotiations with the homeowner around just deferred payments. And I thought that process was really elegant. Not sure where, if they always will, will work out that way, but, you know, you can always, you can always do what we did in that situation, which is just take two years to catch up with small incremental payments until you're made whole is, is another scenario as well. If people weren't inclined to provide the, the credit.
Well, and actually it is referenced in here, the major finances authorized to enter into payment arrangements.
Okay.
So that is on the table without council assenting. So in, in a normal scenario, we can, at staff level, we can do that. And that's usually pretty successful. But the recourse, if someone feels that's not good enough, is to request an actual write-off and we can't do that.
Yeah, fair enough.
Counselor O'Neil?
I like the level of detail and very much appreciate it. I, I guess what it comes down, the question it comes down to for me is, is this person owed this money? Or is this a, you know, sort of an oops or discretionary?
They're not owing anyone, or else Luke would be able to write it off.
Okay, so I, I didn't get the sense from the reading of this that it was a question of inability, I don't know the people involved, but it didn't, it doesn't read as though it's, you know, an inability to pay. It's, it really reads as a, this is fair and this will square it with me. And is that, and so I was just kind of wondering why we received this because it seemed like, in my, in my reading of it and not knowing any details beyond it, it seemed a very reasonable request for a two-year conversation that this resident was having with the water utility. And I felt like it was actually not a large sum of money to, to cover, you know, the time that would have been put into that.
When I, I'm gonna give you a slightly long answer, sorry. When I was a student in Halifax, I worked at a lot of call centers. And on my very first call when working for Bell Down in the US on a call, I had a request for a $1,500 credit and I gave it. So after that, I had a big hill to climb back up with my employer. That is a loyalty credit request, right? It's a, you know, make things right request. And we don't have a policy permitting staff to actually do that. So if, if we wanted to down the road, we could look at the development of a policy to give staff some amount of discretion in that regard below some threshold. As it stands, council is the only body that has that discretion.
Don't think it really says why there was such a delay in the being corrected.
I mean, it's, it certainly is our fault. I can't really speak to why we were supposed to do it. It fell off the calendar, it didn't happen, yeah. So there's no question that it took longer than it should have to address the issue.
The, the text does say that staff visited several times. And was that in an attempt to, to contact the owner?
I don't know the exact details. I, I think that there was a, they had it in their file that there was an issue. And they didn't know if the issue was with the meter or with the reader. So I think they went out, diagnosed the issue, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they then got the party and then went back and.
The bottom line is you, you, you're acknowledging that it was a town error. It was our, our intention.
Yeah, I mean, we absolutely made, intended the service standard to be one year, which would still be longer than normal. Normally it's two quarters, but because they're seasonal, it ended up not being two quarters because the second quarter they were gone. So it ended up being a year, but it should never have become two years.
The, the $430, is that, that is a pure consumption charge or is that a service charge? Is there any service charge in there?
No, that's, that's the water they actually use.
They actually use, okay.
They just would have been billed for it a little bit at a time over the whole period instead of all at once at the end.
Right.
Which is why the breaking it down over a longer period to repay is, that's a reasonable option.
If they actually used it, why wouldn't they pay for it? I missed something there. I lost a gear.
Yeah, I mean, it, the request has come in because they had a one-time charge that they would have had spread out over two years' worth of billing.
But they still used it.
They did use it. If, if they hadn't used it.